All right, we'll get started at this moment in time. It's October 28th, a little bit after 5:00 p.m. And if I can, before I speaking on the agenda, just have a formal roll call. I'll start. My name is Marcus Williams, counselor for Ward Five and Chair of the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee. Oh, you can pick it up from there.
Hi, Counselor Tracy Whitfield. I'm out here at our Mason Square Harvest Fest, but I didn't want to miss the meeting.
Thank you, Counselor.
Good afternoon, Counselor.
Signali DPW Director.
Okay. And Counselor Davila?
Counselor Davila Forrest Park.
Perfect. All right. So if I can, Counselors, it's been since March 4th of this year prior to COVID that we last touched base, and of course, due to COVID, we are now picking this back up. Wanted to just provide a little context for the folks who might listen to this, as well as for everyone on the call, just kind of how we got to be here today. First and foremost, this is a discussion of the parking ban options. This has been an ongoing discussion, and I believe it's been the third meeting so far. We are looking at making the process easier for, of course, the residents to park during especially snowstorms. We're looking also at the different city bans, trying to come up with the best solution, of course, for our municipality, the city of Springfield. And just a few takeaways from the last meetings that were captured. Some of the clerks' notes, Sue and Co. shared some notes with me. Give me one second, just waiting for Counselor Ramos to join. How are you, Counselor Ramos?
How are you, sir?
Well, thank you for joining. All right, so I was just going over a few takeaways from the notes from the last meeting. Counselor Ramos, as I was saying, the last time we met on this was March 4th. So of course, back then, due to several of the storms that we had last year, last winter season, the mayor had issued some directives to DPW, of course, again after those storms, for snow removal. One second, sorry, waiting for other people to join. How are you, Counselor Allen? All right, so again, just going back to the takeaway. The mayor had issued some directive to DPW after the storms last year, first snow removal. And this committee at that time determined, after also some fairly good conversation and productive conversation with DPW. Sorry, just waiting for Counselor Hurst to join. All right. That there should be a more simplified approach to parking bans for residents, both to allow crews to more seamlessly plow the streets as an effort to improve snow removal activities. And just again, a couple more takeaways from those notes were that we had determined, and of course, Chris had provided some evidence of this, that Springfield had certainly the most liberal parking ban in the surrounding area, based on a printout that we had all received back in March on the different parking ban options that was accompanied by a municipality breakdown from Western Mass all the way to Connecticut. And at that point too, former Counselor Kinsey had mentioned that it's an ongoing issue that has been going on since there were cars in snow, and the issue is with parked cars, so the parking ban could certainly be updated. So that was mainly the consensus that kind of derived from those discussions. Again, this is probably our third meeting on the parking ban. And I'm going to turn it at this time over to just Chris, who of course provided us with those eight or so different options. And he also had a recommendation of his own, of course, using the experience and research that he's kind of used already to provide that to the council. So Chris, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
I can figure out how to unmute. Thank you, Counselor. As Counselor Williams mentioned, one of the things we did last year is we went around and I got all of the parking bans for the area towns and some of the bigger communities, especially in Connecticut, that are similar size and deal with some of the problems. And as Counselor said, we have by far the most liberal parking ban. I gotta turn my light here. I feel like I'm in a... I'm getting a... There, that's a little better. I can see a little better now. So we went through and tried to look at some of the locations. I've received a number of, throughout the summer and starting in the fall, I've received a number of emails from different people that have talked about snow. And one of the things that has been asked is, why don't we go to something that's as simple as odd side, odd day, even side, even day? Which in general is a great idea. The issue then becomes, okay, does that mean we're changing at midnight? And to tell you the truth, the biggest problem that we have from snow plowing is between, you know, 8:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. in the morning when we're doing overnight plowing. During the day, regardless of the type of storm, there's not as many people on the street. It's still a problem, but it's not that bad. We still have issues, but it's worse when it's overnight. Because, you know, a majority of the people are at home. And I have about a handful, four or five people who have emailed me who are overnight employee or overnight workers who, you know, want us to basically set it up for them. But, and what we have now is we have some grace periods. And so if we went to an even day, even side, the last thing that I want to do is have people have to go out at midnight and change. And what I don't want to do is create a grace period, say from midnight to 6:00 in the morning, because that's going to be the worst time for us having to do any sort of plowing on the street at all. My preference, my number one preference would be is that we have absolutely no on-street parking whatsoever. I know that will go over extremely well with a lot of people. You know, it'd make life easier for us. The one thing, just to back up a little bit, when we do ticketing and towing, when the city does it, that's run by the police department, usually we end up with anywhere between four and eight officers, and one of those officers is going to be a supervisor. And with CJ's towing, we end up with anywhere between five and 15 tow trucks, depending upon drivers, et cetera. How they get the drivers in. So even, and I know I've shared with you as well as what we've done in the past for ticketing and towing numbers, even at best, and I don't want to say at best that we've ticketed and towed a ton of people, but we probably get to less than 10% of the vehicles that are on a city street. And when we go through a neighborhood, the police always go through first with lights and everything on, trying to get people out to move the vehicle. And, you know, there's a little bit of a success with that. But the bottom line that I wanted to let people know is that even when we go through that, we're really only hitting a small amount of people. When we start to do ticketing and towing, we hit the major streets first, because that's where we need to go. And unfortunately, a lot of those major streets are all in the same area. Very few major streets in the city have on-street parking. You know, so we end up with streets like Dickinson and Belmont, somewhat Main Street and North End, you know, Armory Street, Carew. So it's kind of the same streets over, but a lot of them, you know, Parker Street, no on-street parking. Boston Road, no on-street parking. State Street, minimal if any on-street parking. So streets like that, we don't run into a problem. And then when we get those done, because that's where we're plowing first, we then get into the secondary streets. And it's dependent, 100% dependent upon how many officers and how many vehicles we have. They run that entire program with one of my employees overseeing it. So one of the things that I want to, I really want to do is get people, regardless of the plan, to adhere. And one of the major problems that we have is on, you know, Forest Park off of Sumner Avenue and Dickinson Street and Side Streets, North End, some of the Old Hill, Upper Hill area, but not as bad. But in those areas, the streets are just extremely narrow. And to be honest, with cars on both sides, the plow job stinks, simply because of the logistics that we have to deal with. So what I would like to do is, a lot of our other communities go to things like during a snow ban, you can only park on one side of the street, whether it's even, whether it's odd. You know, it's picked for the whole storm. The only problem I have with that is, you know, a lot of towns, Chickaby, West Springfield, you know, you park on one side, that's it. That side will never get cleared. And what we try to do on ours is that our shift people will then go back and try to plow those other areas. We then get more complaints from the residents that have shoveled out their driveway, and then 12 hours later, we come back and plow that side of the street and plow them back in. So it's a little bit of a, you know, and we deal with that, and we try to do as best as we can with it. But what I would, I mean, my preference, and I just want to find my note here.
And while you're doing that, Chris, we're also joining Counselor Letterman, as well as Counselor Allen, and I've seen Counselor Hurst join as well.
Right. And, you know, the other thing too is making it as, I guess, easy for the citizens to be able to figure out what we're doing. And I know ours right now is a little, I don't want to say is a little confusing, but, you know, you're changing, you know, odd side, even side, and people do get confused. I would like to go to some sort of even side, odd side. But I'm struggling with how you present that. You know, if you're not changing it at midnight, how do you do it? And I think it's just as, it's like, okay, we'll do it on the odd side from, you know, noon to, you know, or 5:00 or 8:00 o'clock to 8:00, and then odd from 8:00 o'clock to 8:00 type of thing. You know, but you're still running into the exact same problem. What, in my opinion, what I have found out, unless you have no on-street parking whatsoever, we're still going to struggle with a few problems here of people being on the street. And yet, there's people who don't follow the parking ban. I mean, that's going to happen all the time. I want to get rid of the people that are either confused, want to comply but can't. The bigger problem that I also have is in a lot of these neighborhoods with two-family houses, the struggle becomes, and me and Victor had a discussion about this last year, was two-family houses that have two or three cars. They can all fit in the driveway. Nobody wants to be in the driveway, because now you're behind somebody. So, and then you're having neighbors try and move. So my preference would be to create some sort of winter season winter season type of ban that would go into effect the entire winter regardless of there being a snow event. And this will get people, and this was, I lived in the city of Hartford for a few years, and this is what Hartford did. And it was like, once the snow season started, regardless of there was snow on the ground, on Monday through Thursday, you could only park on the even side. On the other days, you parked on the odd side. And when you did it for a number of days, it became muscle memory, because you stuck out like a sore thumb if you were on the wrong side of the street. You wouldn't do it. You wouldn't. You just wouldn't do it. So what I'm also trying to avoid is not have to go into a neighborhood or the entire city and re-sign everything. You know, change signage and stuff like that. A majority of our streets, and we would have to go and double-check this, a majority of our streets allow for parking on both sides. There are some that don't. I understand that. But my preference would be to go some sort of winter season. And then, you know, if you did it, say, November 1st, and that might be a little too early, but say November 15th, if you don't have a snowstorm, you can still go ticket, but I would expect that you would probably do a month or whatever of just issuing warnings to everybody so that they would understand it. My, the whole thing about ticketing, police may differently. I could care less about the money. The money is, in numbers, is somewhat meaningless. You know, when you're ticketing 200 cars, and you're doing 40 or 50, you know, dollars, five or six times a year. In the city, it's that, the number really doesn't make a lot of difference to me. Even if it came back to me, it, numbers like that really don't make a difference. My preference would be get these people off of the street. So my preference would be to go some sort of winter season parking ban that would be followed regardless of whether there's a storm or not. And it would be in place in lieu of the parking regulations that would be out there. This would take a lot of training, I think, with the citizens. So that would be my preference on what we would want to do.
Thank you, Chris. And can you just please remind Counselors of what the current parking ban is?
Sure. The current parking ban now is when we put the parking ban in place, it gets on all the websites, it's on the TV, it's part of the crawl. It is no parking on the odd side of the street from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And no parking on the even side from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. So from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., you can park on both sides. And from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., you can park on both sides. That's, we call that the grace period in the city. So that's the enforcement that we have right now.
Perfect, thank you. I have a couple of thoughts on this, but I will integrate my thoughts during the conversation. I'll turn it over right now to Counselor Ramos.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for putting this meeting together. I think right now is good timing as we're heading into the snow season. I would love to get something approved by the city council prior to our first snowstorm of the year. So thanks for putting this meeting together, and thank you, Chris, for all of the hard work you've been doing on this. I remember we communicated back and forth at the beginning of quarantine and towards the, right before we went into lockdown, we were talking about what the best language would be to use. And I think, if I remember correctly, we were leaning towards just making it a one-side parking ban. Whereas, you know, Chris would make his recommendation whether it should be odd side or even side, depending on what the, what would be most ideal, considering places where there is available parking. Where we would say, the parking ban would simply say, no parking on the even side, for example. And once DPW is able to go through and clean the side that is not occupied, then the parking ban would then be lifted. And the hope would be, right, that cars would start parking on the side that's clean so that DPW can go back afterwards and clean the side where the parking ban was. So that would be, so the ban would be simplified by simply saying, no parking on even side for the duration of the parking ban. And that would make it a lot less complicated for a lot of people. It would, it would make it so that people are not running back and forth and moving the cars back and forth. I think that that would lead to a lot less confusion, a lot, you know, less confusion and a lot less ticketing, because, you know, and that's the hope, right? What the hope is that if we can simplify it, you know, people would be ticketed less. And more importantly, that the streets will be cleaned out more accurately. So, so that would be my preference. I think that that would be the most simple way of clarifying this parking ban.
Chris, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I, it's one of the options I looked at early on. And as I said, with the storms that we've had over the previous three or four years, we have been extremely lucky because we haven't had a lot of back-to-back storms. You know, we usually, by the time the next decent-sized storm would hit, everything would be melted. My only concern on that, as we mentioned, Counselor, was if, you know, we do have some back-to-back storms, you know, when I talk about back-to-back, you're talking maybe a week apart and things like that. One side is going to get a little difficult. You know, to tell you the truth, if everybody follows it and you have a clean road in the middle and the other side, yeah, the road will be in good shape. It'll just be on the side where the parking is that, you know, hopefully we can get to, I want to say sometime, but it's going to be dependent upon, you know, when and where we do it. Because what happens a lot is we get, immediately after storm, we get complaints. And a complaint usually is, you know, we need some sand, we need some salt. And it's funny, because I can list 35 streets that regardless of whether we have snow or no snow, we're going to get a phone call saying they want sand or salt. And usually, when we go down that street, we try and clean it as best as we can on it. I think, you know, that may be something that we try for a year or two with it. And I think, again, any one of these is going to have a downside. And I think, you know, that may be one that has a downside, but it might be probably the best downside. The only, the only problem that I hear from other towns on that is, all right, I go out, it's in front of my house, I clean my car, I clean my parking space. I pull out, and that pain-in-the-ass Victor pulls into my parking space. You know, that's when you start to see people putting chairs out, things like that, you know? And stuff like that. That happens a little bit, and again, it's, you know, it's not my parking space. That would also force, simply because some of these streets in certain neighborhoods, it would definitely force some people into their driveway where they have it. And, excuse me. That would then, I think, have capacity on the other side of the street to be able to do that as well. Now, when we are talking major, major snowstorms, already had discussions in the city about city lots. And right now, I don't think that's an issue at all, especially with COVID. If our schools are closed, you know, people can park in the city lots. You know, they're empty. We don't need to get them plowed by a certain time to have the school open the next day. I mean, yeah, we may figure out something after January 1st. But, you know, opening up what we can is something that, you know, we've been trying to do, depending upon the timing. We just haven't had the, I don't want to say we haven't had the huge snowstorm from a planning perspective, because the one we had last year in December, kind of the back-to-back one in a day and a half, was, you know, we were supposed to get eight inches total, and we ended up with 22, so it was kind of hard to plan for it with that. So if we did want to go to that one side, again, this is what a lot of communities do. It's not, I don't have an issue with it whatsoever. You know, we're going to get complaints on one side of the street. I think what you also get, just from an anecdotal standpoint, it's going to be, okay, is it always going to be in front of my house, or is it always going to be in front of, you know, the neighbor across the street type of thing? We pick one, we pick odd, we pick even. It doesn't really matter to me at this point. We've looked at a lot of the regulations. There does not appear to be, you know, we have 2,000 streets with odd side parking and only 50 with even side, so it doesn't really, doesn't really make a difference.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Good to see you, Director Signali. I've got some quick questions. First, how are we looking so far with the contractors?
Awful. Awful. We target 150. As of right now, we have about 40, 45. But I know 35 that are not coming back. And the reason why they're not coming back primarily is they can't find drivers. A lot of these, we modified, if you haven't seen the bid that we put out, and probably tomorrow, I'm going to post it again on Facebook and a couple other locations. I've done it two or three times. And when we post it on Facebook, if all of you could grab it and share it, I would love that. One of the problems that we run into is contractors will register six, seven, eight vehicles with us. And last year, we were lucky, they were lucky if they could find three or four drivers. So instead of having, you know, 145, we would only have 100. So a lot of those companies right now are extremely reluctant to register all of those vehicles for a lot of different reasons, because they know they can't find drivers.
You think COVID-19 is one of those reasons?
Excuse me?
You think that COVID-19 pandemic is one of those reasons?
You know, I think a little bit of it, some of these contractors and stuff may have people that are on unemployment. But last year, even non-COVID, they were having extreme difficulty finding drivers to come in. And what we did this year is we upped our, to sign up before the end of next week, we upped, I'm trying to think of the word we used, incentive to, if you signed up before that date, we gave you an extra, I think it was $5. It used to be $3. And then we significantly up the per-hour cost for all of the plows, especially the larger vehicles. Brought in probably last year, and we're still working through it this year, but we probably brought in 25 or 30 new contractors with, for example, one of them is Giuliano Pools out of Vernon, Connecticut. You know, he wanted to bring in 12 trucks, and last year, he registered 12, but could only come up with eight drivers. I mean, I was ecstatic with eight. But, you know, he's having a tough time trying to find drivers for it. Some of these smaller, smaller, one, you know, somebody who has a larger pickup, one of their problems is they can't meet the insurance requirement. So we modified that a little bit. Because some of these people with some of these trucks have extremely minimal insurance. You know, not even close to having a million dollars in coverage. You know, so they don't meet the requirements of the city. What they can do is they can go to their insurance carrier and get it for a few months. But one of the drivers told me, or one of the companies told me last year, it cost him $400 to get the coverage. And we only had three plowable snowstorms. He missed one of them. So I only made $800. And I had to pay 400 of it to insurance. And so a lot of these people are looking at it. However, I also think that a handful of those people, once you get into the winter, when I say into the winter, once you start getting that week or two of very, very cold weather, some of them are going to turn back. At last year, we had 72 plows in place. Right now, we're like 46 on that. I do know we're, you know, we've been actively going back to everybody who's plowed with us for the last four or five years and getting that to them.
But I hope that we can do better. I'm sure you're going to be working on that, because
Yeah, we've been
About 40, 45% of the workforce that we have, and I'm concerned, although there are many factors that affect this, the demand for workers, I'm concerned how the second wave of COVID-19 is also going to affect them. And after all, I will argue to you, they are essential workers. Chris, if I just quickly follow up with you, just to clarify, you did say that your preference is for the snow ban, a snow parking ban, is no on-street parking whatsoever during the whole season?
Yeah. What a lot of communities do, Hartford being the most, if there's a parking ban, there is no on-street parking whatsoever.
Starting from when?
The storm, from the beginning of the storm to the end of the plowing, and then when the plowing is done, then on-street parking comes back.
So it will be, you will be doing the storm itself, no on-street parking whatsoever?
Yeah, it's not like it's for the whole season, it's just during
The whole, four or five months, whatever the winter lasts.
Yeah, it's just during the storm.
I see. Now, that's what you prefer? You think that will work best?
Yeah, I mean, that would make my job the easiest.
Right. Now, so the question is, you were talking about the enforcing aspect.
You guys, hold on one second. I'm just getting a call from the boss.
Yeah, oh, would that be the mayor?
Mayor, how are you?
Take a brief intermission, everyone.
Yes. Sorry, I get nervous. Somebody probably knocked on one of our traffic signals, but it was Yeah, I mean, I think, to tell you the truth, Victor, yeah, that's what I want. I also think in the city of Springfield, when you get into certain neighborhoods, that it's going to be realistic.
Right. No, I follow that, but my point and question Right, no, I I followed up, but I, my, my, my point and question, Chris, is that uh, assuming that, say, we follow your recommendation, that we institute the no-on-street parking whatsoever during this, during the winter storm.
Yeah.
Uh, if we only have four to eight officers and five to fifteen tow trucks, how, in the name of God, are we going to enforce it?
Well, and that's what, you know, that that becomes the difficult thing, because if you're, you know, if you're on your part, if you're parking on your street and you never get a ticket from us, you're just gonna keep doing it. You know, and that's kind of the problem. And when I mentioned something, something like Hartford, I I was, the years that I lived there, I was amazed at the people, that everybody followed it. And I, you know, I lived on an apartment building across from two other apartment buildings, and there were people on the street, you know, bumper to bumper, under normal circumstances, but once that flake came down, they were gone. And I I was shocked, and but I, you know, I also think that, you know, over a period of time, you know, once people, you you know, uh, I hate towing cars, because I get the phone calls, and you get the phone calls, and when I get them, you know, these people are not happy, number one, you know, they're upset. Um, you know, and so I I would love to be able to do that. It would, none of these is gonna, is gonna be an instant success, no matter what we do. It's just that if you're not on the street at all, and you get parked, you get, you know, you get towed, it's like, hey, the rule's simple, don't be here, you know, on that. And hopefully, uh, you know, you would get more people over time. But, you know, if we get into a neighborhood that we never really tow, uh, you know, sixteen acres, most people do not park on the street in sixteen acres, because it's single-family homes, they're single occupants, so they, families have a big enough driveway, you know, so we're not gonna go tow one car on ten streets. Um, so that person's always gonna park on the street, because they know they're never gonna get parked. My street in Forest Park, not to say that it never gets towed, but there's two or three cars that are always parked on the street. And what the guy says to me is, I don't care, I know you're not gonna tow me, I'll go out with my snow blower and clean it afterwards. You know, so, um, yeah, each one of them has a little bit of a difficulty, but if we went to a no parking at all, this would be a two or three-year thing of people really learning it, and us moving around the city, making sure, hey, you're gonna get towed. Um, you know, even with fifteen or twenty tow trucks, each vehicle takes fifteen minutes or so to tow. You know, a lot of these trucks can do two, but, you know, so you're talking about a half hour to tow two vehicles per truck. And that then also includes, they then gotta drive them to the yard, bring them in. And, you know, it's not like just hooking up at your driveway right now. So it ends up taking, you know, probably three, excuse me, an average tow truck that can do two, can probably do an average of three, maybe or so an hour. So the numbers just become astronomical when you have, you know, a thousand cars plus on the street.
Alright, thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Um, Councilman Letterman, just before I get to you, I just wanted to to mention also, um, in regards to uh the the no-on-street parking. Um, while that might be ideal, you know, I I certainly see folks, especially along like the main street corridor, um, as well as some of the business community, I think, um, might be putting, you know, I I see them, that potential problem for them.
Yeah.
Especially when they still have to report to work, um, as well. Um, you know, Hartford obviously has a more concentrated business community, so so it's kind of amazing to me that it does work, um, so well there. Um, so I think I'm certainly at this point more inclined to either go with the first or second recommendation. I think that's perhaps, um, just for myself personally, uh, where my decision will lie. Um, I have a question, um, and I'll get to Councilman Letterman in one second, just around, just the note, notification period. Um, assuming that this is October, the end of October now, let's just say hypothetically, if a a snowstorm hit um, mid-November, the end of November, um, are folks, do you think folks are going to have enough notice? As well as, I mean, I I don't obviously think muscle memory will be, uh, will be there, um, that quickly. But I just want to make sure that there's some type of system in place, um, where there's more leniency, as you mentioned, uh, upfront. And then a little bit more conservative as time went on.
Yeah, I I I think we would definitely have to do that, and even if you did it, you know, even if we passed this in June, nobody would be paying attention to it.
Yeah.
You know, they, and if you did, they would forget about it. Uh, you know, so that this would become a huge blanketing, public relations effort on everybody's part, you know, primarily ours, but, you know, being able to get the word out that the city's changed its parking regulations. And the the huge problem right now is, okay, you know, the newspaper, I, when I say newspaper, the printed newspaper is almost meaningless uh, from getting notices out to people, you know, Mass Live is wonderful. Uh, you know, but when you're talking about Mass Live's webpage, or you're talking about their Facebook page, the story's up for a day. Uh, and then if you're talking about ours, our website, and or our Facebook page, it's up there for a little longer. And people get the notices, and between, you know, the Office of Communication and the DPW, we probably reach, without shares, probably reach above five thousand people, you know? And, you know, we're we're dealing with forty thousand homes. So, you know, it's it's getting that word, you're a hundred percent right, getting that word out of uh, you know, what we need to do. Most of the people that we deal with in the city, when when we're towing somebody or we're out there handing out flyers, uh, when I'm driving around, I have my, my, I always print out fifty or a hundred with me on the front seat. I'm primarily looking for people plowing out into the public way when I'm out. But most of the people that are parked either correctly or illegally have no idea uh what the parking ban is, they follow everybody else. So the idea is, is being able to get that stuff out. Now, the other thing is that if we're going to go with it, we may need to, over a period of time, do some signage. Uh, you know, up and down streets and things like that, on main streets. Uh, you know, big notice signs out, you know, winter weather parking ban, you know, park on the odd side of the street, park on the even side of the street, whatever, whatever we come up with, I think would end up having to be something like that, so that people do that sort of things all the time.
Right, and just a quick follow-up to that, um, to your point. You know, sometimes I worry, you know, or not worry, but wonder about like implementation of certain ordinances, right? And this is one that would come to mind, where I don't know, and you know, it'd be, it'd be great to hear some of this as well. Um, does it make sense to have more of a marketing campaign that gears us up better for a next winter season? So that folks become in the know without penalty? Or is is it possible to, and feasible to also just start this season, um, being maybe, uh, like I said, as lenient as possible, and then of course, maybe next year? I think that's just another, uh, being more, of course, aggressive next year, I think that's another speaking point, you know? Um, I just want to make sure that residents have enough time to uh get accustomed to any changes around that, because, you know, folks, for, like you said, Chris, things happen by way of seeing. So, um, I will, I'll turn it over to now to Councilman Letterman.
I ju, I just have one, one that, what I'm not sure of, and I thought about this today, I'm not sure if the parking ban is an ordinance or not. And the only reason I I I bring that up is that, you know, the time that the, the number of votes that we would need to take at a council meeting?
Yeah.
And that I'm not sure of, I'll, I'll check that tomorrow, but uh, that popped into my head. You know, it's like, okay, if you brought it at the next, you know, the, um, oh, God, when's the next? Is it next Monday, your council meeting?
I believe it is.
Not till the sixteenth.
Oh, the sixteenth after.
Sixteen, sixteen, that's right. Uh, so, you know, if we had something on the agenda for the sixteenth next past, you know, is it an ordinance change, or is it just a, you know, uh, you know, rules of the road, or kind of an ordinance type of thing? So I'll check that, make sure that we can get that.
Okay, Counselor Letterman?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was, I was actually going to uh express the same concerns on a, an all-out ban winter-wide. Um, I I think that there's really too many neighborhoods where that wouldn't work and would just have an overbearing effect. Um, so I I I would be very concerned with that. I think, you know, I think the goal is to to simplify it. Um, and the the piece that has appealed most to me so far has been the concept around, well, you know, even day, odd day, uh, just because it's easily, is easily remembered. Um, and I think that's really, that's the only reason really that our current one, I think, is a bit confusing to people, is because you really have to kind of look it up and think about it, instead of just looking at the calendar, uh, which we all carry in the palm of our hands at this point, and looking at the street number that you park next to. So, um, you know, I mean, this is a good conversation, I'm I'm sure we'll arrive at a good conclusion. But the the, that was the, the only piece that I would be a little concerned with is a, is a citywide, winter-long uh ban. I just think it would, it would just impact too many neighborhoods negatively. Um, the only other question I have, Mr. Chairman, uh, was in related, although not on this particular topic, but uh, in terms of snow removal, is last year, we had talked about, uh, in your committee, putting the parking map up, uh, so people could track. And I just wanted to know, Chris, I know you had said that that would uh occur, I just wanted to see if that'll be ready for uh this winter.
Yeah, we are, we are all set with that. We are meeting, I think, Friday or Monday afternoon internally, just to make sure everything is all set with that. But all the, all the background computer stuff that needed to happen was all set, and we were gonna kind of dry runs uh, and just make sure that that, you know, the the, I want to say more of the IT logistics are all set. And so I think we're all set for that.
That is great. Alright, thank you all very much.
Counselor Hurst?
Sorry, um, my question was actually uh pretty much addressed by uh Chris. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, Chris, if you could just send that information, my que, to uh, to myself and the rest of the counselors, my question was whether the parking ban was codified in the form of an ordinance or not.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double-check that in the morning.
Thank you.
Now, and just to, just from a council standpoint, this, I don't think it was ever on an agenda.
No, um, Chris, I can actually allude, uh, I I know that was addressed in the notes from the clerks. Let me get back to you on that. I did, I did read that, though. Um, I just don't want to give you the wrong information.
And and the the reason why I bring it up is that when, if it isn't ordinance, it's gotta be put into the proper format. So there's, there's a little bit of background on the legal, and when I say legal side, the law department helps me with that.
Right.
But the next, the next meeting's not until the sixteenth?
Sixteen.
Yeah, that's, I don't think the timing on that's an issue.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, we'll figure that out. Alright, so, I mean, considering um, that this has the potential to come before the body for, uh, I guess, a fuller discussion on the sixteenth, um, I think I would really like to leave this subcommittee with a recommendation um, to put on the floor. Um, and that, uh, with Hurst being here, um, we we do have a quorum to vote on that recommendation. So, uh, at this time, I know Counselor Ramos, is he, is he still on the call? No. He had suggested a, a, a parking ban option as well as, as, uh, Chris as well. Um, so, you know, Chris, I, again, you you have the expertise here. Um, you did, you didn't speak this, uh, I I think you actually spoke favorably of Counselor Ramos's recommendation as well, citing there's gonna be issues any way you look at it, you know what I mean?
Right.
Um, I I'm actually comfortable with both. I don't know, again, i- if you had to make a decision like today, I mean,
What what I, what I would say is that we would, we would have uh no parking on the odd side of the street. And the only reason picking that is because uh Chicopee, West Springfield, and there's one other, have that.
Okay.
When you're, if you're the average person looking at the scroll on the TV, it's the same.
Yeah.
You know, it's like all of a sudden Springfield's not the different one.
Yeah, I gotcha.
So we, you know, you know, it's, it it ends up looking the same.
Okay. Um, and and are you still proposing during the winter season for a certain?
No, I would just do that during a storm event.
Perfect, during a storm event, perfect. Okay. I am, I am comfortable with that. Uh, is there any further discussion on that particular item?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can, can Chris clarify that again?
Sure.
Yeah, we, it would be during a, the parking ban be changed from what we have to no parking on the odd side of the street.
During the, during
During the, during the event, yeah. And typically with us, it might be total twenty-four, maybe thirty hours. Uh, we only keep that extended, and if we have an event that, you know, is one of those, you know, twenty-plus inch snowstorms, you know, we can modify that, you know, to be able, because for different things, that's not, that's not a big deal. Uh, but for an average snowstorm, if we just said no parking on the odd side of the street, uh, I I think what I, what I would then, what we would then have to do is, I I think you're then gonna get, I don't want to use the word inundated, but you're gonna get calls from that side of the street. We get them now anyways, so.
The reason you want, you want to continue on the odd side is because that's what the surrounding municipalities are doing.
Yeah, and it, you know, if we're gonna go that way, it just makes life a lot easier for people to follow.
Now, the snowstorm would be defined as when you declare the snowstorm park, parking ban to when you lift it, correct?
Correct. And usually what we do, ours was always a little different, because I had to time it based upon, um, the parking ban that we had now. For, for example, you know, I I I don't, I never started a parking ban. Uh, I tried to start a parking ban at nine AM or at seven PM, because that was when it changed. You know, starting a parking ban at three in the afternoon didn't make a lot of sense uh, with that, because, you know, okay, that means I have to park on this side for three hours, then I gotta move. Uh, with this, we could then do it kind of more timing with the storm.
Right.
Uh, on that. And one of the problems that we did run into, and, you know, well, we try not to do it, and hopefully we'll learn from it a little bit, is if I did it for seven o'clock at night, and it didn't start snowing until, say, one in the morning, police were out there doing ticketing and towing before there was a flake of snow on the ground. While it was important to me to get those cars off the street, it was a bad optic. You know, it really, it really was a bad optic, you know, to be out there ticketing and towing. And that was the biggest complaint that we got. It's like there isn't a flake of snow on the ground. And in some cases, we're, we're doing that, um, uh, hold on one second, your, your associate, Mr. Allen is calling. Yes, Tim? Yeah, can I, we're still on, can I give you a call right back? Okay, thanks. He had another question. Uh, but like I said, is that, you know, that was the biggest complaint, so hopefully we can time it a little better with with the storm and, you know, not have to deal with, uh, you know, towing of those vehicles, you know, while there's no ground. One of the biggest problems is when we're expected to get a two-to-four or two-to-five inch snowstorm,
Right.
We do ticketing and towing, and we don't plow.
Yeah.
So hopefully.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair, thank you, Chris. Are you looking for a motion on, um?
Yeah, I will. Just before that, Counselor DiBella, um, just one question I did have as it relates to this. I'm just thinking about, like, for example, on Seymour, um, in in my ward, where, you know, I'm not too sure if the odd is Ballyett side or not, but where where there are, I guess, larger swaths of, um, property that still kind of are adjacent to homes across the street, um, where would they park in that instance?
As long as there's parking allowed, they can do it.
Okay.
A lot of streets like that, that, there are a number of streets in the city that have, um, what we call, it's called severe weather parking ban sides, that it's no parking unless it's during a storm.
Okay.
So, yeah, a street like that, yeah, then you park on the other side of the street.
Okay. And I see Counselor Hurst's hand up here.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, my, my recommendation would be that, uh, before we recommend this to the full body, if that, if that is what your intentions were, that, uh, before we recommend this to the full body, if that, if that is what your intentions were, that, um, you might work with Chris and maybe one of the attorneys in the law department to actually draft something along the lines of the recommendation that you, um, that folks are in favor of. And then potentially have one more meeting, so we actually have a document to send to the full committee. And if we wanted to do that prior to the sixteenth, then that seems to make sense. I think my only hesitancy now is that we're, we're recommending something verbally to the full committee, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, uh, what it is that, that, that actually looks like. So that, that would be my, my thought. And we don't even know if it's an amendment to an ordinance or an actual ordinance itself, so it might make sense to have Chris do that research first, uh, and then maybe we can put something on paper and then, um, send it to the full committee.
And I, it, it, Councilor, um, I think that the snow parking ban is basically just a paragraph that's within the rules of the road.
Okay.
So we would then just be replacing that paragraph. But I'll, I'll look that, yeah, I'll do that in the next day or so, so that's.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
I think it's a lot less, um, or I think it's going to be a lot more, a lot simpler than, um, um, you know, changing other ordinances. And I know, uh, Counselor Ramos isn't on, we're trying to do something with, uh, uh, the rest, or the building on, uh, private ways type of thing.
Yeah.
Came a little bit confusing from a ordinance writing standpoint. I, this one will be a lot easier.
Alright, yes, Counselor Hurst, thank you for that, at that point, um, duly noted. And I, I certainly agree with that. I think it would make sense just to have another meeting prior to the sixteenth. Um, Counselor Davila, did you have another point?
No, I was just going to echo, uh, Counselor Hurst's suggestion because this is a big decision. Uh, we should have all the docs in a row before we vote for a recommendation, before it's integrated to the body. Um, and if I may too, uh, for the next meeting, uh, Chris, I would love to hear a little bit of the progress and where we are with the contractors.
Yeah.
That really spiked my interest. I, I really, you know, we, we need them and we need to figure out these darn times. And may I say also that I did find very appealing your suggestion about using the empty school log during the COVID-19. Uh, those are resources that we could be using, uh, to see how we can minimize, uh, people's inconvenience and improve the quality of life. So those two items, I would love to, uh, also, uh, kind of look at at the next meeting if possible.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Alright, I think, um, at this point in time, I think that was a, a good conversation to have. Um, and Chris will just be looking forward to, uh, your response to whether that stands as an ordinance or.
It's no problem, no problem.
And we'll, we'll, we'll schedule a subsequent, uh, meeting to this. Um, but I do appreciate everyone's time and attention here as it relates to the, the, uh, parking ban. And, uh, at this time, if I can have just a motion to adjourn?
Be, uh, before you, you do that, Counselor, uh,
Yeah.
There was just two quick items not, not related to snow that I just wanted to bring up and, uh.
Okay, yes.
Uh, Victor, uh, probably sometime in the next week, I will need to talk with you and give you an update on the X project. Uh, we had a very, very good meeting today with Mass DOT. So I think we have a great, uh, solution going forward that is minimizing the amount of widening that's happening in the, um, uh, reduction in the number of trees that are going. So I'll need to get together, uh, with you on that. So, uh, and, you know, if we need to do a meeting on that, but, uh, uh, just to fill you in, I'm then going to have to figure out how sooner or later, we're going to have to make a presentation. And I'm not sure how we want to do that from a standpoint, given all the rules. But I want to be able to definitely get back to everybody with that they had all their concern, but it looks like we have a, uh, uh, um, good solution going forward. Mass DOT is on board. We're just, we're waiting for that. We have to submit something, a formal document to them, which our consultant's going to be doing in the next few weeks. So I just wanted to bring that up to you. And, uh, the Justin, or excuse me, Marcus on the, um, issue Cabinet Street.
Yes, 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 yes.
Um, the homeowner there has been calling, I, I know, talking to a ton of people in our engineering department.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I guess, trying to figure out what her major concern is ahead of tomorrow's meeting. Are we having that tomorrow?
Yes, we are, uh, Chris. Um, we can certainly speak. It's, yeah, it's just, you know, we're certainly having it rain or shine at this point. Um, and I think you and both you and Phil have, have actually already addressed many of the concerns um, that she had. So, and I, I actually spoke to her today as well. So I, I can follow up with you after if you like.
Okay, no problem. Uh, so, uh, that's five-thirty tomorrow, correct?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful.
Alright. A social distancing and mask required.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you, everyone. At this point, can I have a, a motion to, to, uh, adjourn?
Agreed.
Great, appreciate it, Counselors.
Uh, Counselor Williams, that meeting tomorrow, five-thirty, we assume, right?
No, it's on site.
Oh, it's on site? Well, I'm, I'm glad that I asked.
Yes.
Is that on the agenda as we go CNN?
Uh, yes, it's, it's. Yes.
Alright, um, okay.
Alright, thank you. Second, seconded, okay. Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.